My name is Pam Murchison. I'm really proud to be the Executive Director of Symphoria. And I started about a year ago. And I just think it's so wonderful that we have young musicians as such an integral part of the Symphoria family, the people that are in the concert hall participated in their school music programs. And so we definitely are working together to build community leaders and great employees and audience members of the future. So we're really, really glad you're here. Owen, I think you, I assume that's a shorthand for hello. Hi Paula, it's good to see you. Paula is Claire's mom and Claire's going to be in her sixth year of SYO. So we're really glad, glad to have you here. Thank you for your loyalty. That's a lot of, that's a lot of Sunday afternoon rehearsals and a lot of concerts. So. So, well, good. Well, it's just a couple of minutes after one. So I'll go ahead and get started again. The chat feature is available if you're on a laptop. It, it has confounded me how to make it work on an iPhone. So if you figure it out, let me know. But we had some issues with that yesterday. And I've had issues using the chat feature on my iPhone as well. So I would recommend that take a minute and switch over to a laptop. And if you find any success, let me know. I will repeat the questions that are asked in the chat. But if you're using it, go ahead and say hello and tell us a little bit about your SYO student. And we're, we're really excited. You know, when this all, everything changed so drastically. So really felt for, it felt for me like very quickly in March. We just appreciate everybody's communication and staying engaged. And we've been really happy that we've been able to stay connected with the community. And that includes, you know, all of the really great content on SYO Sundays. And, you know, students creating videos and, you know, participating in different virtual events that Symphoria musicians and the SYO conductors have led. There, it's given us time to dig into a lot of topics that we might not have time to explore when we're in the heat of rehearsing for a really challenging concert. And so we are really glad you've been with us in finding the opportunities within the obstacles. Elizabeth's mom, who is here, Leon, hello. Margaret, hello. And Margaret's daughter, Elise Ruby, this will be her first year in SYO. So if it's your first year, even though you may not have had any expectations, I'm sure that you were expecting something different than, than this. So we're really glad, you know, we think that because we. Mary Ann, it's good to see you. Ryan's first year. Jose, it's good to see you too. Glad your kids are auditioned and, you know, looking forward to the, the season ahead, whatever it may bring. So we alluded to this, hi Nagi, we alluded to this a little bit in some of the email communications over the last couple of weeks. After spending a lot of time thinking through different scenarios, looking at the school reopening plans and kind of understanding what resources we have available to us. What we would very much like to do is spend the first SYO cycle, which goes from September 20th until that first concert on November 15th. And we would like to divide the 130 or so students who are, have been accepted into the SYO program, divide them into small chamber groups for that first cycle. So Lana, Anne, Nicole, hello. Clinton, it's good to see you. We've got a bunch of first year students here. So while we would normally have the string orchestra rehearsing and the repertory orchestra rehearsing from like 2:00 to 4:30, and then there would be a break and the young artist orchestra would rehearse later in the afternoon. What we'd like to do is to, within each group, put the kids into smaller cohorts of, of chamber ensembles. We are fortunate that we have a very good relationship with the Fang family. Dan Fang's daughter, Abigail's in the youth orchestra program. Mike is on our board. Their parents, Frances and Betty are big advocates. Betty sings with the Oratorios Society. So all of our performances for at least September, October, November, and this includes the adult orchestra, are going to take place at Inspiration Hall, which is on James Street. If you've been to any of our kids' concerts on Saturday mornings, that's the St. Peter's Church, which the Fang family now owns, and it's set up for live streaming. So we're way, while we still have a lot to learn, we're much further ahead of the game because we have that facility and those resources available to us. And so when we were talking about different options for the youth orchestra and, you know, how can we make this work in smaller groups, just so it's all really more manageable for everybody? You know, if we have groups of four to 10, 12 students, it's much easier for social distancing. It's easier to have sort of some staggered performances to avoid bottlenecks at the start and end of rehearsal times. And just, again, just make sure that we can be really vigilant about all the things we need to do to keep the students and the coaches and everybody safe. If we have a, if there's a, somebody in a quartet that has an exposure from, you know, possible exposure in their public school classroom, we can then just have that pod do alternative virtual activities. We don't have to shut down the whole program. So as we're all learning more and more about how to be together again safely, having the smaller cohorts of musicians, I know makes us feel a lot more comfortable that we can deliver on our promise to keep your kids safe and, safe and observing all of the protocols throughout the, the first part of the school year until we learn more. So what we, what we have, so the Fangs have offered use of Rock Center, which is on Cumberland Avenue. It's over by some of the SU sports fields. It used to be Rockefeller Church. I know we have some Symphoria musicians whose kids went to preschool there. And there are many classrooms in that space. And there is also a very large sanctuary, a very large gymnasium space, and then a very large rec room space so that if we have a, a group of, say, 15, there is more than adequate space for social distancing, for putting chairs six or eight feet apart so that students can have a lot of space around them. We can mark areas for the coaches so that they can be, you know, also socially distanced from the students. And, you know, everybody wearing masks just as, as much as possible. When players will, will have a challenge, certainly removing their masks when playing. But with all of the social distancing in place, we, we have more than adequate space. So there are 14, those three very large spaces, and there are 11 other spaces that are good for maybe quartets or trios or some other smaller chamber groups. And what we're imagining that the Sunday would look like is there would be, you know, the first group of, you know, 10 to 12 chamber groups that would rehearse from 2:00 to 2:45. We're abbreviating the rehearsals for the fall just because it does, you know, best practices according to the Health Department and the CDC. We allow a 30-minute break for the first group of students to leave, for the next group of students to come in, but more importantly, for the space to air out, to get some air circulating in the space. Then we would have a second group of 10 or 12 chamber groups come in from 3:15 to 4:00, rehearse for 45 minutes. Same thing, you know, that group leaves around 4 o'clock. We give the spaces about 30 minutes to air out. And then any other chamber groups that we have come in would rehearse from 4:30 to 5:15. We've been talking to the coaches. And I know you, Mrs. Dodd, who does the string program is, has already been looking at supplemental theory workbooks and activities. And again, just, you know, some ways that we can really have a holistic youth orchestra program because we can't really safely follow the two and a half hour rehearsal model like we did a year ago. What can we do? What are the things we've always wanted to do if only we had more time? And so really looking at these first eight or nine weeks of SYO as an opportunity to do those things. Additionally, the youth orchestra conductors are looking at alternative activities. If we get into week three or four and we have to have a shutdown, we just do, then we will present some really high-quality virtual activities. I know, you know, many SYO kids have taken advantage of some of the summer music programs. So there, now there's a lot of, a lot of modeling, a lot of templates that are available that weren't a year ago. And so we have a better understanding as an organization of how to provide really great musical experiences for your kids regardless of what the situation is. So while we don't know exactly what will happen week to week, we have a really strong, strong plan in place. And we also have contingency plans in place because we do understand that we're going to have to pivot throughout, throughout all of this. It's, you know, we'll learn a lot as, as the school year officially starts. I think we've been observing very carefully what's happening now that college students are back in the community. Really, really thrilled that numbers continue to be very positive in the Anadaga County area and surrounding regions. I know we have families that come from outside the county, but in central New York, the numbers are good, even though we have a lot of, a lot of people, you know, adults coming into the community. And we're just going to keep monitoring things and making the best decisions we have, can with the information we have and doing whatever we need to do in cooperation with you so that your students can stay really, really safe and also really engaged and active in orchestral music. We, I think that we want to prioritize physical safety for sure. But we also know that this alleviates some stress, some sadness that, you know, school concerts didn't happen the way we hoped in the fall, in the, excuse me, in the spring, you know, and that we don't really know when full orchestra will be able to be back together, perhaps in your school district, you know, marching bands and our people are making really hard decisions. So we think we have a, a manageable way to keep kids playing music and understanding what that really does for mental and emotional health, especially as our communities are really going through a collective trauma. And I know that you're all dealing with a lot too. So please, if you have questions, go ahead and ask them. I'm going to grab a quick drink of water. But if you've got specific questions, and then I'll, I'll continue to go through kind of what our plans are. We have sent out the 20-page Symphoria Safety Plan, which has been reviewed by the County Health Department as well as the Regional Reopening Control Room. We're working very closely with music educators, with the fine arts coordinators at, at several schools, with our education committee, with universities so that we can make sure that we're staying up to date on the best practices as they evolve. Nagi's asking where SYO will be. SYO will be at Rock Center for at least September, October, November. And that's at 999 Cumberland Avenue. It's the old Rockefeller Church over by the SU Fields. So. So as we continue to monitor best practices, we are going to consolidate that very lengthy safety document into a one-page SYO-specific document. We will, we will have health screening questions that students will need to complete online before they arrive to the Sunday rehearsals. Right now, and this was sort of, I think, the consensus after yesterday's town hall, we will not be taking temperatures. You know, the kids are going to be going through health screenings every day at school. You're going to know if your kids had a temperature of higher than 101 or 100.4 or has any symptoms. And what we really want to do is avoid bottlenecks and slowdowns as we get, as we enter into the SYO building. And so I think we're going to just leave that to the families to self-report on the health questionnaires. And if that becomes an issue, then we'll, we'll fix it. But you're going to be taking your kids' temperature every day. We have two questions. Paula asks when forming groups are their considerations for keeping kids that are in the same district together or grouping remote versus in, in school kids? We did have a conversation about this. And Kim asks how we'll be breaking up the kids into the smaller chamber groups. So we are not going to announce that who, how we're dividing things up until September 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. This is going to continue to evolve. Some parents are going to decide to delay enrollment until we know what's going on. We're still going to have some kids audition. You know, we're, we're still accepting tapes. We've got a good crowd, but we, you know, we, we can continue to take auditions for the next couple of weeks. So as we do that, with the health screening in place and with social distancing and a max mask requirement in place, in talking to some parents and in doing some informal surveying, one of the strengths of the youth orchestra program is that students from different school districts get to be together and, and know each other. So where we're leaning now is to lean into that opportunity to make sure that we're all being very vigilant with screening, with social distancing and with masks and hand sanitizing and all of that. So we are not currently considering keeping kids from the same school district together or kids who are at home together. I, I think, you know, with all of the kids at school, even with a hybrid model, we're dealing with a much smaller cohort of students. You know, perhaps maybe just, maybe 60 at a time in 14 different classrooms. So that, that's our plan is to kind of do this according to, you know, they're in, whatever ensemble they're in, and then by ensemble, you know, breaking them up into smaller groups. So the kids that are, have been accepted into the Young Artist Orchestra would play with other kids in the Young Artist Orchestra. Repertory would play with kids in the Repertory Orchestra, String Orchestra. I think Mrs. Dodd has 30 kids enrolled right now, so she's looking actually at two groups of 15. What we are going to do is keep all the string players together in the string groups, and we'll put the wind players together in wind groups. So there won't be any mixed ensembles or strings with winds for now. Yes, Nagi, we can resend the 20-page safety document for you to review. And Anne's asking if we're still not comfortable with in-person, what are the options? If you're not comfortable with in-person, which we totally get, totally understand, and you want to defer your enrollment to November or cycle two, that, that's totally fine for this year. If you decide to do that now, then we are going to prorate the tuition so that you can start in the, in the, after the, the first cycle. We, right now, don't have any plans for entirely virtual youth orchestra. And unfortunately for us, with everything that's going on, with the various things in terms of reinventing our delivery model, I, I don't think we have the capacity to have the in-person options and then a full array of virtual options as well. If that changes, we'll let you know. But as of right now, I, I think it's probably just more than we can take on, unfortunately. Nicole's asking if there will be changes in the attendance policy due to the unique situation. Yes, if you, we do not want to discourage you from. We, we don't want you to feel penalized for keeping your kid home if you feel like there's been an exposure or you're not, your family's not feeling well or, or anything like that. So, right, if, if people aren't coming because, I don't know, they're just, I have too much homework, that's a different issue than like, I, there's been a child in my, in my kid's classroom that's had a possible exposure. I really feel like it's best for them to stay home this week. Yes, please do that. The attendance policy will not be harsh or draconian due to COVID. Absolutely, we want to encourage you to make the decisions you need to do to keep your family safe and then also for the other students and families in the youth orchestra. This is a, we're all in it together sort of situation. So yeah, the attendance policy, if you have, end up having an extra couple of absences because of COVID, that will not be held against you. You know, we'll just, we'll, we'll deal with it all as, as, as things come, come together. So I, I hope that's answered sort of the, the first few questions. If it hasn't, or if you have additional questions, please put them in the chat. So health questionnaires, we're going to have, you know, some people monitoring the entrances to make sure that students are keeping six feet of distance between them. We'll have some markers outside of the Rock Center so that, you know, kids aren't kind of bunching up as, as they're coming in. We'll have a, a system in place to make sure that the health questionnaire has been completed before arrival. And we're going to have a one-page safety sheet just for the SYO because in addition to wear your mask, wear your mask, by the way, did we say wear your mask? And you should wash your hands, and then you should put on your mask. And you should stay six feet at least away from everybody while you're wearing your mask. So in addition to sort of the obvious things, we have, we're going to ask students to bring their own music stands. That eliminates some surface contact if, if the research starts to look, trend towards that being an issue. We are going to have the kids tune their own instruments. If you've got a, a younger student at home that's used to their orchestra teacher or Mrs. Dodd tuning their instruments, this is going to be a great time to figure out, you know, to learn better how to tune, tune your own instrument. So we might ask, you know, figuring out how to get a tuner if you don't already have one, if there's an app on the phone or an iPad or an iPhone, your conductor and coaches can help you with that. Reminding students, especially students who play wooden instruments, any of the string family, bassoon, oboe, clarinet, that when you walk in and use your hand sanitizer, really make, make sure that your hands are completely dry before you take the instrument out of the case or else you'll start to see some issues with varnish going away, and that's not good. So, and as we go along, I know, again, already the, some of our, our conductors and coaches are recommending things that we include in this. So we're putting together a specific SYO safety sheet that will be widely available and that will be, you know, put out everywhere at rehearsals so that we're all remembering to do all the things we need to do to keep ourselves safe, our friends safe, and our instruments safe. Elizabeth is asking if Mrs. Dodd's group might look like two groups of 15 for Karen's group. The first draft looks like we've got like three groups of about 10 string players and then a group of, I think, five winds and five brass, or two groups of five winds and a group of five brass. But the string, the string groups are about 10. And again, string, you know, it's not always the most fun thing ever, but it is possible to play with a mask on the whole time. So between the large rooms, social distancing and mask, mask protection, you know, we feel confident that we have the, the space to implement that safely. And again, why we're not going to put that out there is over the next two weeks, if that information changes, then we'll make adjustments. We don't want to tell you six different times what group your student is in. So we're going to wait until right after Labor Day to do that. Paula's asking about the timeframes. Would string, use strings be from 2:00 to 2:45, repertory from 3:15 to 4:00, and young artists from 4:30 to 5:15? I think if we have, if we have, Mrs. Dodd has, if Mrs. Dodd has two groups, then I think one of, right now, again, this is, you know, August 16th, there's a lot of days and new cycles between now and September 8th. But, you know, she would do a group of about 15 strings from 2:00 to 2:45 in one of the large rooms. And then there would be a 30-minute break, and then she would do the second group of youth strings from 3:15 to 4:00. And then we have, you know, 13 other spaces available to accommodate the Repertory Orchestra. And then we should have ample room and the 4:30 time slot to accommodate the youth orchestra groups. Anne's asking, the groups will be six feet in the rooms too. Yeah, we're not going to put kids together if they can't be six feet apart with masks. And with the wind players, we're going to try and have, put them in rooms where there's even more space in between them. We, we're also in the process of purchasing two portable air purifiers that we can use, have on-site to help, you know, get things, get things aired out and things freshened up and air circulating. You know, some of the rooms have external windows, so we'll be able to kind of get some fresh air moving. And we're, we're working right now with Healthways in Plaski. And they're, they're helping us to understand, you know, the, what, what our equipment needs are for air purifiers during this time. And we should be able to kind of move things around throughout the space and make sure that everybody's accommodated. I don't believe we will need to use all 14 rooms at all three chunks of, of youth orchestra Sundays. You, we don't have, Lana's asking if the 20-page health restriction is available through the member site. We don't have it up there yet. That's a great suggestion and we can work on getting that there. And then also the one sheet. So it, it might take us a couple of days. I'll continue to include it in the Wednesday SYO emails. And it was definitely in the SYO email from last week, the one that announced the town hall. So you should be able to access it there, but we'll put it on the SYO site. Thank you. Elizabeth, wondering if we have an idea how to split between, between types of strings? Would it be a mix in each group or more like sectionals? I think that we're looking at mixed groups. So there would be some violins, violas, cellos, and bass in each of the string groups. But again, I, we can't quote me on any of this because it's still really early in the game and also I'm not one of the conductors. So I'm, I, I understand where we're going, but I'm, I'm not the boots-on-the-ground expert in this. But when I was looking at the preliminaries, you know, we could do this, or we could do this, or we could do this, it would kind of be like smaller, like chamber orchestra with some mixed instruments. And this is all happening, you know, really quickly. So we, our next steps, once we understand, you know, what, what enrollment's going to look like as we move forward to Labor Day, you know, getting really specifics of what SYO divided up into chamber groups looks like for the fall, then really leaning into our Symphoria musicians to help the conductors coach the ensembles and making sure that we have the best repertoire selected for your students. So we will let you know that, Elizabeth, about repertoire and pieces when we know more, but we don't know yet exactly what we're doing. And again, we're, I want you to know we're working on it, we're being really thoughtful. You know, all the students just went through auditions, so the conductors have a really good idea of levels and, and, you know, similar levels and groups, kids that are going to be really great working together in, in different chamber situations. And, but we're still working on that. So we'll let you know, but by September 8th is when we plan to have that information sent out. We know you're going to get a lot of updates, so we're trying to minimize, minimize announcing changes. And then the first rehearsal is the 20th of September. Also, in terms of entrance and exits, there is an entrance at Rock Center on Cumberland. We're adapting the traffic flow so that parents can drop off students on Cumberland Avenue. Kids can enter through Cumberland. And then when it's time to exit, all the students can exit through, can exit onto Cumsey Street, which is just around the corner. So parents can stay parked on Cumberland and kids can safely walk out on the sidewalk and meet up with the cars. For any of the SYAO students or repertory students that are driving themselves, there is parking available on, on Cumberland. So it's a quiet street and the weather should be nice for most, barring some rain, the weather should be really nice for the first SYO cycle. Someone's asking when the exact results of the seating auditions are going to be sent out from the auditions. September 8th is when we will have all of that put together. And again, we're just, you know, figuring out kind of, you know, we're not going to be in a full orchestra situation for the fall cycles. we're not going to be in a full orchestra situation for the fall, um, cycles. Um, but, uh, uh, we, so we're, um, we're not going to be together in a large group, but, um, we'll, we'll kind of let you know about, um, the, the different groups. Um, Jean, I, uh, and I'm not sure the connectivity issues aren't on my end as well. Um, so thank you all for your patience with this. Um, uh, percussionists will be involved in the small ensembles. We're still working out what the smaller groups are going to look like, and we'll have that information available on the 8th. But there's great stuff, you know, for winds and percussion. Percussion, you know, certainly can wear masks the whole time. Um, really good stuff, um, for brass and percussion. So once we, um, know better what enrollment's going to look like and we can start to really, um, firm up what the individual groups are going to look like, and that will be later this month. Um, you know, the enrollment deadline is September 1, and, and then, um, so we're working on getting things together and then making that announcement September 8th, um, which is later than we would normally do it. But given the situation, we're trying to avoid giving you, um, you know, 17 updates on what, uh, what, uh, chamber group your student is in. Um, Nicole Sun is a first-year participant. How do we know which group he's in, repertory or, um, young artist? So, um, let me go back and check some of the communications that Lana had sent out about acceptance. I assumed that, um, that, that information was in your acceptance email, but it's dangerous to assume. So Nicole, let me check on that and I, I'll, I'll let you know. Um, uh, we can, we can certainly, uh, let you know about that. Um, rehearsals will still be on Sunday. Um, there'll be, um, 45-minute sections, um, between 2:00 and 5:30. Um, so, uh, probably the youth strings will, there'll be a group from 2:00 to 2:45, 30 minutes to clear the space, let it air out, 3:15 to 4. And then, um, we'll have another group, 3:15 to 4, 30 minutes of break to let the space air out, let some kids, uh, exit, the next group of kids enter, and then, um, the last, uh, group will be from, um, uh, 4:30 to 5:15. Right? No, yeah, 4:30 to 5:15. And again, we'll just, you know, we'll manage this as we go. Once we have a better idea of, of how many groups and, and, you know, I had some parents ask, well, I've got a kid and, um, repertory and a kid and young artist, can they be, can their groups be at the same time? We are going to do our best to make this as convenient as possible for you. Um, and, uh, i- if you have questions as we go along, ask them. I, I can't promise that we can accommodate every request because this is a bit of a, a goat rodeo. Um, I, as they say in West Virginia, where I lived before I moved to New York, um, just the whole COVID situation. So what, we will do our best, um, to accommodate those things. So if you have those kinds of questions, if you can ask them early, but I, I really can't promise that we can accommodate all of them. And I, I thank you for your patience with that. Um, you know, just as we kind of try and get everything worked out. Um, we talked a little bit about the attendance policy. We definitely want to empower you to make the decisions you need to make for your family and for the other families that are involved with the SYO, and honestly, for the organization. Um, I, uh, you know, um, professional musicians and student musicians alike, it's like, you know, oh, I, I broke my wrist. I can still play. I'll be there. I'm letting my team down. Maybe, but if you think that you might have had a possible exposure or you're not feeling well, it, it's way better to sit this one out, go see your doctor, make sure that you're testing negative, make sure that you're healthy, make sure that you have what you need, and come again next week. We all know that's better for everybody, so we are not going to be super draconian about the attendance policy. If you email us six weeks in a row, like, oh my God, my English teacher is giving me way too much homework. I can't do youth orchestra. That's different than, I think, I have a temp, I've had a temperature for a few days. I think I should stay home, given the situation that we're in. Um, so just keep talking to us about the attendance policy. Um, you know, if your, uh, the school, um, you know, sort of goes into, uh, recommended quarantine, if you've had an exposure at work and you are quarantined and so that means your kid needs to stay home for a couple of weeks, just, you know, as much as you feel comfortable letting us know, like, this is a COVID-related thing, we're going to be out, ju- just let us know and so we can document it and keep it all, all going. Um, we know that this is going to be, um, it's going to be nuts. And, uh, we want to work with you to make sure that we're all doing the best things for your students and for the organization. So, um, just know that. Um, we, uh, so, over some of the safety stuff, um, we'll wear a mask, we'll have hand sanitizer, bring your own stand, tune your own instrument. Um, something that came out of, uh, a, a request in yesterday's meeting was, um, figuring out a way to do a socially-distanced open house the week before. So, um, certainly by September 13th, um, you know, and we'll coordinate this with the Fang family to make sure it's okay for us to have access that extra week. But, um, if, you know, making sure we can have everything set up, um, in advance and so that in very small socially-distanced groups, parents, um, or maybe one representative from the family, or maybe you and your student can come and see what the spaces are going to look like, um, get familiar with, with the protocols, you know, kind of do a walkthrough once. It'll give us a chance to practice on a smaller scale with that first week's needs to look like because it's going to be a in- incremental process for us. Um, so, um, uh, having, uh, the opportunity to, um, pre-register for, uh, uh, open house tour of the space. Um, and then certainly having, um, it for those who can't be there, probably not a virtual tour, but certainly photos online, um, so that everyone can get an idea of what things look like. And we promise to label them, so it's not like when you, uh, go house hunting and you see pictures of this huge kitchen online and then you get there and you're like, this isn't even the same house. Uh, we don't want things to look more socially-distanced than they are. We want you to feel really confident about, uh, about what this is going to look like. So, um, you know, having that information, um, the week before. Uh, Kim's asking if things progress and we're forced to shut down and go online only, and a musician decides to set out a cycle, will the tuition, uh, fee be prorated? Um, what we're looking at doing right now, um, because, uh, Symphoria and we're, we're definitely in the minority here. With any of our, um, patrons and, and, and everything, we are not offering refunds. If anything, we're offering credit towards a future, uh, performance or future year. Um, so, uh, what, if you decide right now that you don't want to start until November, we'll prorate the tuition. But if you do decide to sign up for that first cycle, then we're going to, um, you know, keep providing you with virtual activities through, uh, through the first cycle, um, uh, so that we can still have youth orchestra activities. Um, so Kim, I, I hope that answers your question. We're not planning on it right now. If we get to a situation where it's like week four and we just, this is, we can't, the schools are shut down, everything's shut down, um, what we'll try and do probably is if you're a graduating senior, we'll deal with that separately. Um, but, you know, perhaps have a credit towards next season's tuition instead. Uh, because really, we don't want, um, this to be an opportunity for anyone to kind of get off the SYO train either, which is a real threat. You know, Major League Baseball's facing this too. If you can't have games, what of all those people that get out of the habit of watching? Um, so that's where we are today, um, you know, and, uh, we'll, we'll just continue to monitor the situation. Uh, Jose, we can absolutely think about a virtual, um, open house or, uh, virtual open house option. Probably what's going to be best for us is to, um, put images on social media. I'm, uh, we're a low-tech industry. I'm not particularly tech savvy. Um, so making sure that we can promise a really good virtual tour experience, I, I don't know that we can do that. Especially we're figuring out, um, a brand-new delivery model for concerts, and that includes the SYO concert on November 15. Um, but, uh, but certainly ample photos, very, uh, well-marked documents so that you understand the traffic flow, you understand the, um, you know, what the rooms are going to look like, what the setup's going to look like, and, and all of that kind of stuff. Um, Elizabeth is asking, in the past, there was motivation to be working towards section leader or stand position. Wondering now that groups are split and there are no section leaders, will there be options to move up groups or re-audition? Elizabeth, that's a great question. I'm going to, um, I'm going to say that I don't know con- with enough confidence to answer that right now. So I'm going to write that question down and, and get you an answer. Um, I know last year as I was learning, um, there were a lot of conversations about that. So I, I want to be more informed before I answer it, but I'm going to write what about moving up within an orchestra or moving groups? Thank you. Okay, um, so Elizabeth, the, the question about, um, uh, you know, challenges within an orchestra or moving up in between ensembles, um, I, I will get back to you about that. Um, and it, it may, it may be a few weeks, um, you know, but, uh, we'll, we'll let you know for sure. Thank you. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, I, yeah, Paul is asking if, uh, tuition's due by September 1. Are we asking for, for a commitment for the first cycle by then? I, that would be wonderful. Um, and, uh, if you, you know, have questions about that, let us know. I, um, we're just going to have to kind of play it by ear and see, see what's happening over the next couple of weeks. But right now, we're going with the, um, with the init- the published deadline. Um, and you can, you should all have the handbook, um, and I'll check to make sure the handbook is on the, um, SYO site as well. I think Lana did that before she left, but let me make sure. Um, and that, uh, that will answer a lot of your questions. Um, we're going with the way the handbook is written right now, and as there are updates, we will let you know. Um, so you can refer to that. So we, um, are, uh, still planning, um, to offer a concert, uh, performance opportunity for students on November 15th. Um, we will make a definite decision about this in early October. Um, we'll give ourselves a couple of weeks to kind of get things going. Um, and, um, I'm sorry, has anyone else done these? And so like the chat, like, I feel like I can mostly monitor it, but then sometimes a question pops up and I lose my train of thought temporarily. So, um, someone asked if we could share Elizabeth, the answer to Elizabeth's question. Yes, we will add that to our, like, frequently asked questions so that, um, you know. And if a couple of weeks go by and you don't know, I ask again and we'll get you an answer. But, um, but yeah, we will share the answers to the questions widely because if one family has them, you know, many others do, which is why this format is really helpful for us. Um, so it helps us know what the parents need to know because, you know, you're the people we're serving. Um, so I, I appreciate that. Um, it is, uh, likely that we will have, um, with all the different chamber groups, instead of having a concert that's about two hours long, we could have a concert that's, I don't know, a few hours long, five hours long. It depends. Um, some of the young artist groups, if they're, you know, playing a, a Beethoven quartet, those, those are fairly lengthy. Um, so we think that what we're going to do is, um, give families an option of, uh, two or maybe even three concert times, uh, around November 15th. And so maybe, this is not binding, maybe there's 11:00 AM, 2:00 PM, 5:00 PM. Maybe it's Saturday night if we don't have a, um, Symphoria concert, and then two on Sunday. But these are things we will, um, let you know in early October. Um, and they will be, uh, livestreamed. We will perform from Inspiration Hall, which is the other facility the Fang family is so generously letting us use. Um, well, they let us use it all the time, but we've never used it as, um, as much as we're going to use it this fall. Uh, because all of the Symphoria concerts are going to also be, um, all of the paid adult concerts are going to be, um, uh, livestreamed from Inspiration Hall. It's already set up to do that, less admittedly so. So what we'll do on, on November 15th, that weekend, is we will have, um, you know, whatever we decide based on the chamber groups and the length of program and, and how things need to work, we will have a couple of different options, um, for, uh, for student performances. Um, and it's likely we will not have any audience, or perhaps maybe just the parents, and we need to figure out how many people this involves, um, making sure that we can appropriately social distance within Inspiration Hall between the students who will be there for the performance and, and the parents. Um, and so, you know, while on one hand this means that, well, isn't it, you know, kind of stinky that we're not going to be able to all be together, everybody, you know, a thousand of us sharing music together? Um, you know, we can feel really good about the fact that we're being safe and responsible. And like, your family who lives out of state can watch the concert, whereas before that wasn't really an option. Um, so again, we're leaning into the opportunities. Um, you know, we feel confident about being able to deliver really great livestream performances. Um, and, you know, as good as we feel now, by November 15th, we will have several, several Symphoria performances livestreamed under our belts. We'll have, uh, you know, a lot of things worked out about how to improve the experience. And, um, and it's something that, that we'll be able to do together. Um, something that we're also doing, um, for the Symphoria audiences, because it, you know, people are starting to have small dinner parties. They are starting to have, you know, maybe a couple of friends and family over to enjoy a, a small dinner with, you know, two or four neighbors. Um, so we're, uh, starting to talk about Symphoria Supper Club, uh, you know, invite two other couples over, have some dessert, and then enjoy the concert together. Everybody's sitting six feet apart, um, you know. Um, so that's something that would be an option as well if, if you've got grandparents, um, and they can come to your place and you've got a big screen TV, and we're going to have instructions for how to hook up your laptop with an HDMI cable, um, to your big screen TV so that the sound is improved, the experience is, feels a little bit more special. Um, you know, and if you want to watch it on your iPhone, that is also an option. Um, you know, so we're working all of those things out. And anything that we publish for Symphoria concerts, um, which actually start the 26th of September, will apply to the Youth Orchestra livestream concert. We're going to livestream all of our concerts all season. And so this means even, let's just say we get to the, um, the winter concert and there's, let's just pretend there's a vaccine, we're all feeling great, we're like sitting on top of each other in the venue. It really, I think it should still be possible for your friends and family from out of town for this season to enjoy the youth orchestra concerts, um, you know, because it's something that we're just going to continue to do. Um, we know that even after, um, any social distancing restrictions lift and that, you know, that could be in, in three months, it could be in a year, we just, nobody knows. Um, but we know that there will be anxiety about coming out in public, um, even after the CDC or the World Health Organization or the Onitava County Health Department or the Cuyahoga County Health Department or the schools say it's totally safe. Um, so we want to have options for people to enjoy music, um, you know, in this, i- i- in whatever way makes them feel physically and emotionally safe. Um, so that's something that we're, we're looking to do, um, in the season ahead. I'm just checking my notes to make sure that I, uh, haven't missed any of my bullet points that, that are evolving as we go. Um, and I do want to say that one of the reasons why we decided to, um, use Vimeo to do the town halls is because this how, this is how we're going to be delivering the professional, um, Saturday night and Sunday afternoon concerts at St. Paul's, um, which you may be able to watch now, uh, to be, based on the youth orchestra, um, uh, rehearsal schedule. So this is the platform we're going to use. I'm actually at home and I'm not hardwired into a modem, which would be better. Um, so once we're onsite at Inspiration Hall and, um, you know, we're using our dedicated production team to do this, um, the quality should be even higher. And so I just, you know, want to remind you that access to really great, um, uh, live orchestral music, again, kids are free and, uh, with our, our youth orchestra family discounts is still, um, is still available. And I don't see that, um, so much as an advertisement, as much as I think one of the things that's really wonderful about a youth orchestra program that is affiliated with a professional orchestra is that the, um, the wonderful Symphoria musicians who are going to be coaching your kids in these chamber groups, um, throughout the fall, especially the students who are brand-new and, and may or may not have a good relationship with some of the Symphoria musicians, um, you know, the, to have the opportunity to see them, uh, play live on stage Saturday night, be with them on Sunday at rehearsal and say, well, like, why did you use that vibrato that way? Or, or why did, the flutes, why did you look at each other in that part? You know, I thought that was really cool. Um, is another thing that, um, that we can do. So while it's, um, you know, not going to be the full orchestra experience for the fall, you know, these, um, smaller, uh, chamber groups provide a, a different level of, um, uh, a, a different ratio of, um, professional to student relationship and, um, certainly a different level of, um, intimacy and transparency, just a different level of conversation and, and question-asking, um, that we don't always have available, although the conductors are all amazing and, and answer questions. But you know, that, that group setting versus a, a cohort of four or 10, 10 musicians is really different. Um, so, uh, we're getting to be about, uh, 10 minutes to 3:00. I'm going to take another drink of water, uh, because I've been talking a lot, which I obviously like to do. Um, but I'm still curious to hear from you and, and understand, um, what other questions you have that we haven't answered because it will help us moving forward. So, um, uh, your questions and feedback are, are So, um, uh, your questions and feedback are, are really welcome. Uh, again, you're the, eh, eh, the parents and the, and the students are the ones we're here for on Sunday afternoons and, and, you know, throughout the school year. So, just let us know what, what you need um, to feel as good as possible about the, especially the first cycle, but the season ahead. Um, just, and, and while you're uh, getting your questions typed in, and if you're on your phone and you don't see a chat, it's because I couldn't figure out how to make the chat work on my iPhone. Um, so it's really better on a, on a computer. And we will have access to these. Um, uh, we're gonna pick the one where I was least awkward and uh, share it on uh, social media and, and through the um, SYO network so that uh, if you have a, a friend or somebody who's got some questions who wasn't able to be here, then we will, um, we will be able to answer those questions. Um, Elizabeth, will each group have some of their conductor's guidance or will it all be Sinfonia musicians? It, it will be a mix. Um, so certainly the conductors are involved in forming the groups. They'll be involved in, you know, helping to select repertoire. They know the students the best. They just listened to, you know, a million auditions. Um, and they uh, and have past experience with the students. And I cannot imagine an SYO where um, you know, people aren't sort of uh, from a distance, you know, um, listening to groups, um, providing some feedback, saying hello, checking in to ask how things are, are doing. Um, but uh, so i- it, it will be a mix. Um, music, uh, how will music be distributed? Um, we will work that out. Um, I think what we will likely do is have PDFs sent out um, that first week of September and then have paper copies available um, for students on their stands uh, or on their chairs when they get to the first rehearsal on the 20th. There is um, a professional organization, the Music Um, Orchestra Library Association, which is a professional organization and, and like every other professional um, association, they are distributing best practices um, for library protocols as, as we go through this. And those are the um, protocols that you see in the, the safety plan. Um, if you look, uh, there are two sections that the library policies are in place. It's in the um, uh, section about dealing with rehearsals and performances for musicians. And then also in our office, administrative office procedures. Um, because it used to be that, um, you know, people could just like, drop by the box office whenever, say hi to our box office manager, Emily, and, and pick up their music, and, and we've changed that as well. So, when we resend out the um, uh, safety protocols and next Wednesday's uh, e-blast, and when we put it up on the website, you'll be able to look for those. And as things change, um, and we learn more, we'll, we'll update those as we go. But I know, uh, and this may not be the impetus behind the question, but I, I, I know that uh, people are excited to start. It's been a long time since we've had rehearsals. And uh, no one wants to be caught unawares uh, at the first rehearsal, especially if you're gonna be in a smaller group uh, versus uh, versus a much larger group. So, um, we will be working, um, working on that. Uh, we, um, and we really um, plan to have a very careful and thoughtful search for the Youth Orchestra manager position. But um, we're gonna start reviewing resumes. We've already got several in, um, some very good candidates. And uh, you know, getting those things in place, um, you know, before, you know, before Labor Day so that we will then have, you know, your really go-to-point person um, who's, who is on hand. And I, I'm always, always available to answer questions as they come up. Um, oh, Nicole says, in case you're not looking at the chat, we assumed there'd be no concerts or a school or otherwise. This sounds fabulous. Thank you for working out a way to keep them safe to perform. Um, Kim, uh, same thing. Um, thank you. Uh, we're doing our best. Of course, we're at an advantage because we're one day a week. We've got a very flexible schedule and, you know, we're so proud of the 130 uh, accepted students into the SYO. We've got room for some more. And it is a much smaller um, cohort than um, you know, the school districts are dealing with. Um, one piece of policy that we are gonna stick with um, through all of this, and we'll just kind of talk to, uh, talk about it as we go. But we really do um, plan to stick with the policy of needing, your, your student needs to be enrolled or participating in the school music program to also be a part of the SYO program. That's a policy that helps us, it helps the schools, and it's a policy we want to place 50 years from now. So, um, you know, I know that looks differently for different groups. I, I've talked to some parents. You're still waiting to hear what school ensemble participation looks like for your student um, in the, in the school day. So, what I can say is, we're just gonna all work together on this, um, you know, and uh, and, and see what those, those policies look like. But we definitely, um, as an, as an organization, it's really important to us that the public school teachers um, really understand that the Youth Orchestra is also here to partner with them um, and to support all of the amazing work that they're doing. Uh, so um, you know, so we, we want to keep that policy in place. Um, uh, Lana's commented that goat rodeo is, is new. Um, goat rodeo is, is a term you use a lot uh, in orchestra management. And uh, also herding, uh, herding kittens is another one that we like. And it's because there are so many, um, so many people and so much energy and, and, and so many people that care and want to be engaged and have such a personal vested interest in what we're doing. And, and that means sometimes it's messy and that's what we love about it. Um, so it uh, you know, all of the navigating and the decisions and the, the things that, the resilience that, that your kids have learned by being musicians to this point, that you've learned by being orchestra parents. Um, you know, and, and, you know, the same thing goes really for any extracurricular activity is, is the things that, the skills that are gonna get us through this. And we will, we're gonna get through it. Um, and uh, you know, in three months, we'll be laughing at whatever we thought would work perfectly right now, but, you know, we had to adjust immediately and, and we'll figure it out and uh, uh, we'll do it with humility and um, you know, with as much joy as we can muster and laugh through it all and uh, you know, just keep letting us know what we can do to help. Um, so um, thank you so, so much. Uh, again, if you're talking to any of the other parents or if, if you have a friend that was like, well, I was gonna do it, but I just really feel like now's not the time. Yeah, I totally get it, that is understandable. But maybe encourage them to come to the Town Hall on Wednesday um, and to just, you know, um, sign up for the um, Sinfonia communications. We send a, a, a whole, a big e-blast on Tuesdays. The Youth Orchestra e-blasts go out on Wednesdays. And um, and we're communicating through different social media channels. Um, so, uh, you know, uh, just, um, it, I think what I want as a person right now is information. So, if you could help us uh, let other people know that we are doing our best to communicate information so that everyone can be making the best decisions. Um, and uh, and uh, yeah, like I said before, we'll get through it together. Uh, goat rodeo, that, it may be. Um, so keep letting us know what uh, what's working in your lives, uh, what you tried that is not working, and then, you know, so we can duplicate that and um, you know, kind of help, help get through it. So, um, I'm gonna put my email address, which I, I think you have in the chat. And I'm also gonna put my direct office line in, um, which rings through to my cellphone. I would honestly put my cellphone in, but if we're gonna post this online to have forever, I, I just, you know, um, I trust you, but not random people who might be watching it. Um, but I'm, I'm available, we're here. So, just keep asking us questions and letting us know. And thank you all for spending an hour with me um, on this Sunday afternoon. And have a great couple of weeks of summer, and uh, we'll talk to you soon. Um, we're gonna sign off for now. Thank you all so, so much. Take really good care.